It is seven o'clock and I will call the September 3rd, 2019, Commissioner Beadford. Ask Commissioner McCall to have the invitation.
Dear God, dear God, we come here together tonight in your sight to do the business of Scotland County. As always, we pray for your guidance when our judgments and actions serve all of our citizens to the best of our abilities. And keep us mindful of our duties as elected officials. Please be with those of our citizens who are suffering or who are in need of your comfort as they go through their daily lives. And be with us here tonight, all of us that are gathered, to witness our actions and to give us strength and courage. We go forward serving citizens of Scotland County. And all this to the praise of your own hand.
If you will, and we're here in a quick way.
My great goodness, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved, motion of either second.
Second.
Of second, all in favor of the number one.
Aye.
Aye.
Other than like nine. Uh, next to the public forum, we will open now and we have one that I know of on this way. Remind you that we have three minutes.
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes.
Um, thank you for letting me come to you and speak. Um, I'd like to talk about our challenges in this county and our strategies. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting on Wednesday. And, uh, I was, the only information I was able to gather was an agenda that was put on the internet at our site, on the Scotland County Government site, and the newspaper article, the Longbird Exchange. So if I get something wrong, please let me know. So, the first thing is, we were here last month and we were told of this strategy. And it was clearly just going to be a strategy. But as I reviewed, as I reviewed the agenda, you had some other topics that you talked about. Uh, it would be nice to, uh, in tonight's meeting, to just go over those brief topics or brief county business that you talked about during that meeting. Uh, I was assuming that this form is for understanding county business as a, a meeting lasts week with our strategy. So as we go forward, um, with the challenges in this county, some of the things that we really need to look for or look at is our elected officials and their responsibility to look after our interests. And I'm talking about, today, I'm talking about the educational system in Scotland County and the cost for that educational system. I'm concerned because we have a county that is borrowing money, next year's budget, to pay for this year's budget. I know you have a liaison person that goes to the board. Do you ever, you know, has that ever brought up, the fiscal responsibility? I know the county only has a portion of their, their money or their budget, but we still are responsible to oversee that. So I would like for the county commissioners to be very proactive in how they're looking at the budget for the school. We are doing well now as a nation, but that will change as quickly as it can. And we need to have good plans in place. So when we do have hard times, we are not talking increasing taxes and increasing services. So we look as a citizen of Scotland County, we look towards the board to keep our best interest. Thank you. Could I do a quick three minutes?
You did good.
All right. Hold that out thirty seconds.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the morning? If not, we will blow the lead. And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of the number one saying aye.
Aye.
Other than like nine.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, each year, North Carolina Department of Transportation's Public Transit Division requests that each transit system, uh, propose what their budget would be for capital and for administration costs for the coming year. This is for two thousand twenty-one. Uh, they have submitted that this year, or we have submitted that this year, and it requests your approval, but we have to have a public hearing based on that before we do that. So at this point in time, uh, I guess you need to pass our public hearing.
I would ask for a closing of public hearing to address the approval of the grant documents that were announced to, uh, anyone who needs to address it, either for an organization. If not, then we will close the public hearing and be able to approve the grants or documents that are in your package.
Do you have any questions? Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any questions? Question. All in favor of the number one saying aye.
Aye.
Frank, will you approve that?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Good evening. I love the officials in Patterson. I think it would be an opportunity to speak on behalf of Parks and Recreation. It's always a pleasure. We bring some good news to you guys as we continue to, uh, attempt to enhance the lives of citizens here in Scotland County. Just wanted to provide an update regarding a few projects that have been going on this fall. Um, one that you approved this fiscal year, um, are Washington Park renovations. Uh, here on the screen, you see, uh, ring rings for a project that will be underway October the fourteenth. Uh, this is going to be a four day build lasting from October the fourteenth through the eighteenth out at Washington Park, um, playground. We just removed the current equipment, uh, October the fifth, the local church, um, came out and removed it. So that equipment is going to have to continue life at a new facility. So it's always good to get, uh, you know, some additional use out of that equipment. But, um, just as we move to the next slide. Uh, we want to thank our Public Goods and Grounds Department. Uh, they went out and put some new slip rail fencing out at this, uh, at this particular park. It now has a solidified parking space. Um, an Eagle Scout just went out and, um, completed a project on the, uh, Scottville Roundabout area. Uh, out there, Mr. Asher Alexander came out, um, and this was an Eagle Scout project. All it does is, it basically gives kids another space to play. Um, you know, with the current structure out there, this kid came out and pressure washed that, um, roundabout and, uh, came out and painted it. You know, there were other volunteers out in the community. Um, I showed up, Mr. Patterson even got his painting skills on out there. So it's good to see community support and, you know, overall effort, um, to put this equipment out there. Now, we've got a float on this particular set of, not identical, but, you know, an outside company wanting to charge around, uh, eight, ten thousand dollars to come out and do this on the surface. So it's always good that a local, uh, Eagle Scout comes out and proves this, um, unique play feature, uh, out at Washington Park. So we're excited about this project. Again, we're having a ribbon cutting ceremony October the nineteenth at two P M. out at Washington Park. We always want to invite you guys out to be a part of that. Um, we're actually partnering with the police department. They're holding an event in Washington Park, um, on October the nineteenth from eleven A M. to two P M. So it's a good opportunity, uh, to gather together with citizens and stakeholders in that community to do a ribbon cutting ceremony out at Washington Park. Now, the rendering that you guys saw, we let stakeholders and kids in that community pick out that, that drawing. We let them participate in the color scheme as well as the design. So we're excited, you know, to get that feedback and for this to be step one of our park renovation project here in Scotland County. So our next project, uh, that I wanted to talk about is our insanitarian project. That's currently in progress. That project starts, well, this event starts October the eighteenth. Uh, it runs eighteen, nineteen, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth with part of the Griffin Group and the Chamber of Commerce, um, to hold this event. Uh, just wanted to show you guys, it's a minute long video. Uh, again, we're excited about it. It's a great community event and, um, you know, we look forward to another successful event. So this video was shot in-house, you know, this is something that I created with, um, some interns from San Andreas on our side. That's it. It's just one of the community events we're excited about. And, um, we will answer any questions you guys may have regarding to the Washington Park project or the insanitarian.
Anyone have any questions to ask? Are you looking forward to this?
Oh, yeah. If you want to volunteer to get shot by some paintball, you might have a record turnout, so.
Wow, they found the wear at the airbase here.
So, all right, this is, they call it an old golf ball plant. Uh, this is before one time, obviously, but it is, I think it's on the east side of the airport.
So facing Griffin, is it the one to the left that big lawn?
No, it's past that. You go past it down, it's, it's a weird little intersection, a sharp curb. You can keep it on straight. The building sits right on that corner.
And you'll have plenty of signs and people words and people words together.
Yes, ma'am.
Inside of the building, it's possible.
Say again?
The building, you know, that's, it's pinched in.
It is.
Is everything take place inside the building?
Well, there, there are two buildings and then the middle is kind of a village. Griffin Group uses this area to do military training. So inside it uses, the village is basically a connection from one building to the other. The zombie paintball will be out here outside.
Are you going in the building or is everything outside?
Yeah, we're going in the building. So it'll be inside, outside, back inside.
Just, just as a comment, two years ago, you had this kind of crazy idea. You had just absolutely wonderful turnout for them. I think you brought in about forty thousand dollars into the account.
So, you know, we're, we're looking, you know, we're always looking to build on that. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into it, so, you know, we'll, we'll make it to seven years. That's why we kind of added the zombie paintball. It's a new element, a new way to have one, uh, new element of play. So, you know, we're excited about it.
But you didn't think enough of us to bring your zombies to attack us like you did two years ago? Thank you, Brian, for not doing that.
Didn't want anybody in the audience to, our audience act a freak out.
The board's getting older. You didn't want to do that to it.
Do you have any more questions, Brian?
Thank you.
Next item, we have, uh, in the packet, the bids for the renovation of Covington Street that will allow for the, uh, register of deeds to move in. The bid ta, uh, the bid package, we did receive three bids on the project. Uh, the low bid was M Two Building Company at one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, and that we recommend, uh, we recommend awarding contract, uh, to M Two Building Company. And this was in the capital for this year's budget.
Where is M Two? That's here.
That's here. Uh, their office is downtown.
Does the settlement include any of the abatement?
Uh, the asbestos abatement, uh, is not included in this price.
It was going to be a settlement, but it was released.
Correct. One hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars between the twenty-dollar projects.
How many were allocated?
Uh, we allocated two hundred thousand dollars to the project.
This is the recommendation the engineers will.
Yes.
My question, Kevin, is I, maybe I read you wrong, but M Two's thirty-two cents a square foot. Worth is twenty-five, but worth is thirty thousand dollars more or something. Oh, that's, okay, that's prepping the floor. That's not the whole, other half.
I have a question. Bob, how come we could hear the video from the speaker, but yet we can't hear from the microphone from this direction? So we're over here and not hearing. We see your mustache moving in your mouth, but we, it's, it's not making any kind of sense to us. So we don't know if you rehooked up the system like you were going to or is a problem here? And everybody has mics, nobody uses them. But we would like to hear if at all possible. If there's anything you can do, it really would be greatly appreciated. It's not just me. I'm just the one saying it. Sorry, Bob, really sorry, but it's the truth. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I know you're a sweetie and you must be seeing other light.
Glad you were aware of that.
But you are the one we all have got to, so we have to hear you. I know, but I, I can't see if I see.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, great.
If you come to the front row. Why don't you come and sit on the front row and then you can hear us?
Then I can't see, so I have to sit me back here. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. You were about to, you were about to do that. I was saying we were, put your bids on the, um...
Those are in your packet. And this is of course the packet, this is the tower that we've been working with Horizon to complete. The pack, the tower has already been ordered, so we are waiting on scheduled delivery. The low bid for it, for the direction is Sync Tower Direction Company at $300,000. And it is recommended that the board approve the contract for Sync Tower.
Any more questions?
I guess I just have my normal concern when you see these big swings in a bid price, 300 below, 447 the high. I mean, is that up? I don't have a detailed bid, but I'm not questioning it, I'm just, that always is a signal of something.
I'm always digging it, man, I didn't move jobs.
Well, that's what I wanted to pass, is I wanted, but I'll take it if you give it to me.
Yeah, that's kind of what I always dig, because I would have that feeling.
Well, that and also with the type of tower that we're building, the consultants know that building communication would actually wind up using sync communication, sync tower for part of their bids.
There's subcontract?
Well, they have subcontract for a significant portion.
Move accept the bid for Sync Tower, approve it at $1,000.
Exactly. I have one question, and if you want to turn, if not, all in favor, let me know in the chat.
Aye.
And further license.
The next item is following up from an item that was brought up several months ago at a planning retreat talking about the Royal Hill Community Center. And of course, the community center, after Hurricane Florence, had was flooded. And since then, it has been, the auditorium has been completely taken over by mold. With that, with, so what we were looking at, we discussed with the board about the possibility of getting prices to demolish versus demolish the building and demolish the price or demolish two thirds of the upper building, leaving the general. But with that, the recommendation, it was that without bringing in an actual structural engineer rebuilding that wall, that we look to demolish the entire, all three sections of the upper building. That was bid out, so we did get three bids. The lowest bid was Ed Graydon Holland for $70,000. That's what, remove the building and put it, go back in with fill and seat the material, seated, so it would be back in usable condition.
And that $70,000 does not include the asbestos?
No, sir. Asbestos is again, $45,000, and that needs, that should be done, well, part of that needs to be done anyway because it's actually exposed to the outside. It's still encapsulated, but that's going to be, continue to be a problem. And so that's why beneath the bids, you'll see that I'm actually going to be asking for a budget amendment for $125,000, which would be the $70,000 for the dilution, $45,000 for the asbestos management. And that would allow for a $10,000 contingency for issues that arrive. We expect, the building can be removed from the lower buildings, which will be kept, but they're already owned separate electric. But we're, once we get into it, there may be issues with water and the septic system. We just do not have plans for exactly where those water and sewer lines are at this point in time.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I want everyone to be clear about what's happening in the law field. I wonder if I leave this room, am I so bad of a fan of them? So the auditorium is going to be demolished, the building attached to the auditorium is going to be demolished, as well as the next?
Yes.
The building that's had in front of that, that has three or four classrooms in service, a construction site and a moving site will remain.
Correct.
I want everyone to be perfectly clear that that's what's happening in the law field.
I actually have a question for Brian, too. I didn't ask this the other day, but if we were to do this and start it, I know there's an immediate date. I think one of them said they could start immediately. Is there any groups or anything using that, that we need to give notice prior to do, so they'll know? Change their plans, or is it just that open Sunday?
I wouldn't say necessarily groups are currently using, they use them openly, play basketball. They do have a little club, that does go over the moon, so, you know, I would just have convenience, you know, just maybe Thursday. And I would just say, hey guys, this is Ted, Brian.
Brian.
There's lots of similar ways to do it, so I would, I'm pretty sure we're respectful, just to give them.
Okay, now I just want to make sure somebody wants plans on being there, that?
No, no, no leave play, one on and for everyone.
And for that point, just because of the timing, and to make sure that the site is, all work is done and complete, it may be something we can discuss with contractor about actually not beginning until after the election. Because we would not want work to be done on or near a poll.
Well, that would also give a lot of time for that 30-day, yes, period.
Any more questions? The paragraph there here is Ed Graydon Holland. Right through, he's voting on, anybody who's, who's Ed Graydon Holland, or no way to vote.
Some who?
Second?
Second.
I'm voting down second. Any more questions?
Do we need to add to that for the debate, or is that a separate?
The, the, the bank is already a separate contract.
Ah, okay, but we don't need what that is.
No.
I'm voting down second, Ed Graydon Holland, Holland, favor, let me know in the chat.
Aye.
Further license.
And then the other question is, request the approval of, of overriding the finance officer to make a budget amendment for $125,000 to fund the project.
You want separate action?
Yes.
I made a motion for the amendment, basically amended the cost of the bid and the, uh, anyone?
Second.
I'm voting down second, to do a list and then, uh, you have $125,000 off. All in favor, let me know in the chat.
Aye.
Further license. All right, Tim?
Well, talk a little bit about the resolution that I did, and our purpose is by saying that when I did this, this was not, never really defined, because I didn't, Johnson would have to need to look at it, and I think it turned out to be, it does, but, uh, so don't, don't take that as being defined when I laid a little draft on you. Basically, what this resolution says, or I'm trying to say, is, is to take out the paragraph on 1963 law involving the school consolidation of Lyreburg and Scott County, taking out the paragraph of the school floor. Because I don't feel like it's needed anymore, we're not, we're, we have liaison committee that's working well, and still, the, uh, the reason we wouldn't want to repeal that entire law is because it would mess up the school. I think, you know, it would technically separate the United from the city to a county, and you don't want to do that. So that, that's, that's the purpose of this, is, is just to get the wheels moving on that. I'll also preface that by saying, if we vote to approve this, and it goes to our representatives, there's absolutely no guarantee that it's going to be issued, that it's going to be put before the State House and Senate. And if it does, and it passes that, there's no guarantee to go, it's going to not be told. So there's, there's a lot of ifs and ands, but the wheels got to start turning somewhere, and it starts here. But that's the purpose of this. You know, again, I say that because we did, you know, the liaison committee, they went, how many did you, you know, we did five?
Five.
Five, five years, and it's worked out perfect. You know, and, and all, this year is probably the best example of it, because if we did, and this is based on numbers, because you can't get real good numbers out of the state right now, if a state budget isn't approved. But if you use the state's A D M based on this formally and revised version from 2001 revision of it, we're actually funding a little bit more, not a little bit, we're funding more than what is actually the floor we called for this year. So that's just more proof to me to say that, that, that it's working and working well. By no means am I saying we can go across the board and cut the budget for the school, because there's a lot of inherent things that go along with that, and you start cutting money out of it, you lose other funds. And, um, and so that has to be kept in mind, too. The big thing I wanted to say before everybody here was, there's no guarantee that this is going to happen, no matter what happens. But I think we got to start putting people on record for it, and, and get the wheel turning somewhere. And I think this wheel has been spun a couple of times, but, you know, we're the only one in the state that has to be told what to do, and, and nobody else planned it, but I take that as, as an offense, that we filmed in where our own dudes did enough to, to, to cover that funding. So, um, that's, that's really all I wanted to say about it, like I said, I'm sure Board of Attorney here can tell us that there's probably some wording that's going to have to be changed a lot of it, but, um, that was my purpose behind this, never be this particular one to be the final copy, so.
Tim, have you, have you had any conversation with any of our, whether Carl Pierce or Tom Ginnison are to this?
Yes.
Any, any, any thought that there was sensitivity to this?
It's one of those, you know, the original conversation was, unless I get the same resolution from the school board, I'm not going to introduce it. But that's loosened up a little bit, but not a lot. You know, the thing to keep in mind of that is, it doesn't have to be our local representative that introduces it. So, um, we need to say House or Senate, remember?
Whoever that table is wanting to be running to, whatever it is, I mean, any kind of, unless both boards agree to it, I'm not going to.
I, I, I think that's loosened a little bit.
I think maybe, but I'm just saying, years past, that's, that's what you.
Exactly. That's, that's why I wanted to say what I said to you, but there ain't no guarantee that this is anywhere other than in an envelope, and somebody looks at it and it goes in a file, so.
Well, you missed the late on the end, we're meeting again, a couple weeks now. This same subject came up at our last late on the end. And they said they talked to their board, and based on that comment, I postponed any bullying we might have been denied until after late on the end. To put, or I will then read.
I had no intention of making a motion for that, just to talk about it.
The conversation had been made, late on the end, the late on the end.
Right, even if we had the wording related right, I would, I would do that as well.
Throw that out, it's just some same conversation that didn't.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Any more questions or requests or comments?
Maybe just comment, um, there are several members of this board who have been on the liaison committee, and several members that, for those of you who may not know, there have been a liaison committee for, since 2014, which consists of three members of the school board and three members of the county commissioners. And the purpose was, after a mediated settlement on what the funding to the school would be in that year, and I'm going to say 2050, although that may not be exactly right, we, we were admonished that we should have a conversation and be able to basically do what all of us are elected to do. And that is to negotiate what the funding ought to be for the school system. And since that day, the funding that has been agreed upon has been negotiated, it has not been mandated. And I think maybe that's what Tim is saying, is that we can do it that way for five years, there's no reason why we can't continue to do that. We have, we have, we have approached the school board on more than one occasion, that maybe time to go away from the school floor, school money, pardon, excuse me. And I, I don't know how we're accepted, the members, the Board of Education is to that. I do know they have tremendous challenges, they've got a mandate to reduce the, um, the class size. Also know that we have reduced the tax rate for, although we weren't able to do it in this current year, we had a, we, for the previous three or four, or maybe even more years, we have reduced the tax rate by one or two cents. And that would not have been possible without the cooperation of the school, the Board of Education in negotiating the funding for that. I don't think it's, I don't think there's anybody here that has been more involved in those negotiations than I am. Do I think we're going in the right direction? Yes. Do I think we've reached where we need to go? No. And I'd like to see us continue to do that, and I don't know that this is going to disrupt that. I think it would be good if both boards could make the decision that we do have the ability to negotiate it and, and, and get us away from the state law that requires us to do that. Not to, not to belabor the point, there are probably 50 or 60 counties that are not operating a, a state mandated law as to what the funding can be, but most counties have a funding formula that they have agreed on, which is, which is different than being dictated due by state law, I understand that. But I think to say that nobody else has, is, has an agreement within which they work, I don't think that's what Tim said. I, I do think that there are many counties that have negotiated a formula of some kind as to how they ought to, how they ought to, uh, address the issue of funding in the school system.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on the school floor. I have a problem with the way the Board of Education manages money. The board is elected, you, public, it is called, the county, the only issue I have is, as your elected official, I have no control over about 50% to 6% of your tax money, and it goes to Board of Education, which is mandated by the school floor, which was a beautiful thing back in 60 for their laws when it was instituted. But today, it was 300, 280,000, 300,000 when it first started, and now it's over 10 million. And, um, I have a lot of taxes, I believe it's somewhere around 22 million, am I correct? So half of your taxes, we have a no say so, and that's the problem I have. I believe any commissioner elected would do what's fair about the Board of Education, they have to believe that. And we would do the same thing. I have actually gone from office to office and rathered. What I almost told is, it's a local issue, we have the same issues you have, I talked to folk in medical burden because they just turn their death into it. But if they need to 30 million dollars, they create their tax rate, or 40% to raise 30 million dollars. For us to get 30 million dollars, we have a 25% tax rate, 25%. So that's the problem. So they have told me, and many of the folks are not known, they're not serving, but when we really get down to turf as a commissioner, I risk suggesting our agreement, 100%, it needs to be changed, we need to have a say so. We don't need the agreement that was made 50 years ago to hold us hostage today, because we should have say so in 100% of your tax dollars.
This is just for information only, I'm sorry. If anybody wants this, I can email it, or if you need to get it myself or text or anybody. This is a 60-page thesis that was written on the school floor for Scott County back in 2011. It explains how it started, how it's going, how it's calculated, and how even after the revision, believing it's hidden behind a few pages, it's a fun read. But, um, actually, if you read the first 10, you got it, the rest of it is basically charts. But if you wanted, just get ahold of me, and I can get it to you, or tell you where.
Is that documented by?
Yeah. You and Tim still go.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I'm going to agree. I'm going to build on what I've already said, everybody's hearing. I've been on the record for close to 20 years on this issue. I spoke to the Board of Commissioners and the Prime of Citizen in 2001, and basically made the same request to the Board of Education, and the Board of Commissioners worked together to determine their own funding for the school system. That didn't happen, like you can do discussion. So my record on this is pretty clear, and it's long and sandy. The reason that I have this position is not so much about the level of funding, but about the governance, the county commissioners are able to exercise. We are elected to act your money, and to collect your money, and to spend your money. And I always felt like that this general statute would apply to only our county, impeding our efforts as elected officials. So this, I think it is time that we have taken, take a look at it, and at the board, that we say our opinion on it. Mr. Ivey is absolutely correct in stating that we don't want to let those people come here. There's eight school board members and two elected officials from our county, and from there it goes to law. One other thing that I would like to add to this is that this has been a emotional, divisive issue in our county for at least 15 years, like the first 20. And I don't want anyone going out here thinking the school funding formula is one way. And I also don't want anybody going out here thinking that if it goes away, we're going to drop the tax rate by 10 or 15 cents. Because we don't know what the result of all of this will be. This is step one, and it is a very big step, it's a historic step. And I think this board is committed to be going forward with this, because it's a long time coming, takes a lot of courage. And I know there will be citizens out there that will want it. And because I've been told that for 20 years, since I took my statement on this 20 years ago. So keep all of this in mind as we go out and just run around, I'll talk about it tonight, as I've been saying. But a vote will be coming, and just remember, step one and what follows after, we don't know. But thank you for being here and being a part of this conversation.
The only other thing was, I don't know whether the attorneys had any opportunity to look at this and, you know? Yeah. I am, I wanted to hear what your board's preference was as to move forward. Whether you wanted to go beyond just the initial funding, and as a member of the, I consider the legislation also to remove the, the revisions, or what is it?
I think we need to look at all of it, uh, what we, this thing is, everybody says complicated, and no easy answer to it. And when I say complicated, we can sit here and cut a million or two million or three million dollars out of school budget. But if we cut more than 5% of a fixed number, then we will lose all of our low wealth funding. Uh, all I'm saying is, we need to be careful of what we try to cut out of the school. But if we cut, like I say, you know, and I don't want that number, and I don't want anybody to, but if we need to really be careful, because if we cut more than 5% out of a fixed number, then we lose our low wealth funding. And I've been known that by legislators from the last 10, 12 years, that, that, and the reason this liaison committee was formed, and we, we challenged this thing, and all the school board suits, because we didn't afford to pay what the board said that we should pay. So with 2015 or 16, I think we, or 14, rather, we had this mediation that Chairman Gibson referred to. And at that time, we agreed to lay budget for the school, for our school system, which then needed $826,000. Since that time, we have cut it, the liaison committee in negotiations with the school board, or school liaison committee, has cut it from the $10,800,000 down to $10,400,000. So there's about $800,000 cut in the school funding in the last five, six years. And as everybody has said, it is a very intensive, contentious thing, but I just want us to be careful of the amount that we cut, so we don't lose our low wealth funding, and I don't know exactly how this thing will come about if we do what we're talking about doing. I'm, I'm in favor of not having a school thing, we need to have a negotiation like we are now. And I think we've come a long way in the last few years, so I just challenge each of us to be mindful of what we could lose, or if we're not caring.
Okay.
And I think that Mr. Johnson's question, and Tim's only, I think Tim has in mind what this resolution should do. And I think that, that you, that that's what we should try to model this resolution at, I don't know how to, I think you can worry about that. But I think, Tim, Tim had this, this is a complicated issue, I agree with that, but I think what, what the intention is, is to remove that section that requires the mandate of what we, of what we want.
Well, I think there are three significant steps, one, the initial legislation, and I can see.
Yeah, three. Excuse the mic.
I think there have been three significant steps in process. In 1963, the initial legislation was, quite a better shorthand, I would say, was the initial funding for, the full process. And more recently, in 2003 or '04, there was the legislation which modified that, I would name that the funding formula, which basically got us off the floor.
It's a revision of the original 1963.
And then the third step has been mediation, which has resulted in the now process of law, of liaison committee. My question is, is the intent of your resolution, as maybe no one drafted, to be, to remove the initial form, which is the safety net, as well as the funding formula, which is?
The revision.
The revision, which, you know, if you remove the initial form, you probably still have the funding formula.
Right, which, well, that's what I mean.
And you want to remove both, is that?
Me call that revision in '01, I think it was wrote to, it directly addressed that section two, paragraph C, to what I'm talking about, revision.
So you want to remove both, the 63 language and also the 110 language? That's, that's where you hit with it, so, but is your effort then basically to put Scott County Commissioners and our Board of Education in a position where they present a budget, you review it, there may be negotiations, but something that is more of a standardized process where not all of your units are acting either or, and 100, to put you in that sort of position where you're working mainstream?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I just, what is, I don't feel like we need to say over and out on this, I mean, after 15, 14 years, or whatever it is. After 50, 40 years or whatever it is, so.
You wanted to draw the evidence to have that free flow.
Right, and, you know, the whole bill, you can't, you can't repeal that whole bill.
Why is that?
Murdered against us and all, but just that one section of that, look back and revisions.
And the revision.
Right.
Has this not mentioned the revision?
Correct.
Actually, to the paragraph C.
Right.
What revision is applying twice unless you...
What the president does mention in the original legislation.
Right. That's why that's the draft, and had to lose.
I know you didn't get it.
I'm not an attorney, but I did say the holiday express last night.
Any more questions, or special items?
Yes.
As we get, or you can clear them?
I think I am, and I would guess that that's my conversation.
Okay. I think, I think in our board, I can see for those that are out here, but I think our entire board would be in favor of this resolution, or whatever it were. And I, also, my age now, I voted against it, I'm in 1963, or whatever that were. Okay. Mr. Paul?
Can we rescind the request began in Rockford, and the number of council town halls, asking that someone from Scotland County be appointed to the transportation coordinator meeting? So this time, I would like citizens in the name of Mr. Paul Ward to be appointed to that meeting, but as an nomination for that committee.
Second. Having permission of Mr. Ward as a transportation coordinator, or the head, and second, I would in favor, let it know to say aye.
Aye.
Otherwise, I'm... How are we able to?
The hall can't, yes, yes.
Only a few items tonight. First of all, just an update, continuing update on Covington Street School. Next week, the Board of Education is expected to take up a resolution authorizing the transfer of the building to Scotland County. So the expectation in November is that we would have a resolution for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the transfer of the same building to Richmond Community College. Actually, beginning Friday, they expect search to begin moving. They will move over the weekend, Friday through Monday, so that next week, they will actually have classes in Covington Street. The renovations for the building have been complete. They were complete last week in September. After that, public buildings, public schools, as well as Richmond Community College, all worked together to get the building ready and operational for the upcoming move and to have classes in the building. So again, this will come up next month, just approved resolution where we transfer the building to Richmond Community College.
You want the campus to...
Yes, the campus and everything. Which will be probably the majority of that block. The next item, we've been working with Golden Leaf. This is part of their community-based grants initiative. This will actually be the third cycle of this program across, around the state. They have, this is the Sand Hills Prosperity Zone, if you have a map here, there are 10 counties involved. Golden Leaf has allocated 11 million dollars to be used in these 10 counties. With those, any governmental or 501(c)(3) can apply. With those, but the big caveat on the application is the county manager has to endorse the application. And thereafter, manager is limited to three endorsements, not to exceed, well, I'll say 1.5 million dollars, because no county exceeds more than 1.5 million. Now, with that, of course, there are 10 counties and 11 million, so not everybody's gonna get the entire amount. You will notice that, you know, it is gonna be at targeted areas, because that is the purpose of Golden Leaf, but you'll also see the more incumbent counties are in there. But one of the things that are clear is, the goal is to be, even though it's in a tier two or tier three county, there are still areas of economic distress. So those applications must address some of those areas. So if there's an application for an improvement in downtown Pinehurst, that will most likely not be considered. But if it's out in some of the other areas, it would... I have had meetings, I had group meetings last week, I've had some individual meetings also with different governmental units, as well as some nonprofits, talking about those grants. I've asked them to bring me their projects by the middle of the month, so I can go back through and assess them. I've asked them, they need to also go ahead and have conversations with Golden Leaf staff. Because once they bring them to me, I'm also gonna reach out to Golden Leaf. I've been trying to be as clear as possible, my goal is to get as many projects funded as I can. So there may be a project that I appreciate more than another, but I may not endorse that project at all, because it's not in a priority for funding. So that's where we're going to be going with this. This is a, the goal, the deadline for the initial application is November 1st at noon, and that is for the letter of intent. Then in December, the Golden Leaf Board will meet, and then they will decide who to invite for full application. So those who actually make full application no later than February would be given final notice of awards at the April Golden Leaf Board meeting. So we are still some time away for any actual funding, but that was expressed. And we have shared the information that I have from Golden Leaf to the outside agencies that are looking. And again, since we're limited to three actual applications in Scotland County, looking at 1.5 million dollars, be our significant applications. And also, they've also been very clear that they are not asking for county commissioner or boards of commissioners endorsements on these. That's why they want it to be the managers. They figure we can eat political meat, so they don't have to.
Well, they're not a long counterback fund.
They do not. As a matter of fact, because we've talked about, well, they appreciate matching funds. But the only thing that the county has to do for any of these is, I have to put my name aside on the cover sheet of any we submit. After that, we are completely out of it. At this point in time, the county is not submitting a project. The EDC may submit a project. I've talked with a number of groups that are interested in where looking, but like I said, we'll find out in the next, I'll be discussing with those members. But the county is not on the hook for any part of this.
What was the year we got our life award?
It was when we got an award, those funds actually went to the hospital and to the renovation of the Morgan Center.
And in result of that, we have, we, you know, when the money comes through, we have full campus designation for our city.
So we have that advantage, and the previous time before that was the construction of the Honey Council.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. The next item is goal setting. You may have noticed that I was taking notes throughout the process, they're up on the screen. Those notes are in your agenda now. We're still waiting to get the information back from the facilitator. As soon as they're back in, we will send those out to the board as well. Also, just as forewarning for the department heads here, that will also be probably the primary topic at our upcoming department head meeting, looking at those and exactly figuring out how to turn those, meld those with the strategic goals inside of the departments, turning them more into robust deliverables. Had already done some planning on the summit discussion that was had, and will have some, I'll bring back a proposal to the board, hopefully by November, get some information, give you some information, and I may reach out to you individually as I get some more information, develop a few more projects in that way. And that is it for my report.
All right. Do you have anything?
I do.
I should have known that.
You should have known. And please bear with me, because it may go a little longer, two minutes or so. And part of it has to do with, the folks that were there, who were just the ones at this table, has to do with my reaction to something that happened at Wednesday's meeting, and I'm gonna build on that a little bit. And what caught me by surprise on that, well, let me start that by saying this. Every meeting I go to, I have this. In that corner right there is three things. Robert's rules board, state statute on how county commissioners and what their authority is, and the Scotland County Commission of thought that we thought, and that, well, there's legislative goals that we need to protect. So I carry that to every meeting, not because I wanna do it, or see what somebody else does, but that I don't make a fool out of myself. Wednesday's reaction was pretty strong, in case you missed that, but that was because it came, that issue came up about the resolution, and I'm not gonna go back into that, but it was, it was not on the agenda. We had not discussed it to have it put on the agenda, and we had not voted to put it on the agenda. And it kinda just came out of nowhere, because as of that meeting, it was not on the shared drive, or anybody could look at it. There were two people in this room who knew about that resolution. And that was me and Jason, as far as I knew. Apparently, I was wrong. And I don't know who's taken it upon themselves to go behind me on this stuff, and that's not the first thing. And what I'm, what I'm leading up to here is that we ought to be, I don't know who gave the speech, but I think it was the football coach, we need to be rolling this boat all in the same direction, and not one way or pulling the other way. And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go through a hard list, maybe, but I don't wanna go through all of it. But it's not the first time that this has happened, and I don't know if it's specifically me, or if there's other folks that are getting left out on things that doesn't happen, and just a few things, you know, a big thing that comes out of that is the closed session meeting we had recently, that we had not even been in a closed session. And before we walked in that door, the press walked out with an official press release that we had approved it, what the plan was, and then it was like in the paper, and on the newspaper at 6:00 at midnight. We had not even walked in that room. I know three or four knew about it, but I don't know if everybody knew about it, but I'd never heard of that, that, that issue that we were taking up in that closed session that night. And it doesn't matter what it was, but I do know what it was. Different things like that. If I'm called out, and I'm at home on a Friday night, and I'm called out to meet down the street, to talk about getting my wife in line, or posting something on Facebook that might be negative to the county, which it was, but it was true. If you've got suggestions on how I can get her in line, I'm right here, please give them to me tonight. But that's, that's not, that, I'm not gonna be held out to a different, a higher or lower standard than anybody else sitting at this table. You can work, we can work against each other, and I can be a thorn. We can work together. I'll probably be a thorn, but to be a thorn, and we've worked really well together, in most cases, I think I've seen that. Because I think some people are probably surprised that things that I have supported and not tried to make this contentious at all. But that Wednesday, it gets me so backwards and so hard, because I knew what I had submitted, when I submitted it. And if you wanna look, I've got the agenda that we voted approved on that day, and it doesn't mention anything about it, it doesn't mention anything about discussing any other business, or whatever, which breaks number rule four of our, of our Scotland County thought. It also breaks whatever rule of Robert's rules order, but that, my point is, I know what's going on, and, and I don't want it to go, I don't want it to continue. I don't down this county at all. I don't down what's happened over the years, I don't down anything that's going on now. You know, I don't go out and publicize things that shouldn't be publicized. Everybody sitting at this table knows, we get emails every week, day, month, from an ex-employee or a current employee complaining about something going on in the county. We often, or we get a phone call, or the ones I love, the phone call that I get, that starts out by saying, "I'm gonna tell you about this going on, but I don't want you to do anything about it." And my first response is, "Well, don't tell me about it." But, you know, I've sent, I've sent stuff to you, it's come to people that they skipped around you, or whatever the case is. And my first question then was, they gone through supervisor, they followed their change in command, or they gone through HR? And I haven't run across one yet, that couldn't get, didn't get resolved somewhere when they followed that change in command. So I'm not gonna do anything, I'm not gonna throw any bombs in the scene to make it explode, but I also wanna get the same treatment as everybody else sitting at this table, not be held in a hิ่ง's camp. I want the woman to watch, I'm sorry.
Good job.
I think you can, can I? Carol?
I'm good.
All right. So we not have a recess? Or, sorry?
Oh, she's a jan.
Go. Aye.